We'll bring the April 20th, 2021 Board of Directors Meeting for Piedmont Community Charter School to order. Piedmont Community Charter School is a tuition-free K-12 school that offers a superior college preparatory education experience for this community and its families. I remember too, our agenda is a moment of silence, so we'll take that now.
Item number three on the agenda is public comments, and we did receive one email that asked to be read tonight. Mr. Poole is going to read that.
Yes, sir. From Derek and Logan Ivy of Gastonia. Piedmont Community Charter Board members, after consideration and reflection on the school year to date, I have a request for the 2021-22 school year. I respectfully request the careful consideration of Friday Remote Learning Day continuing into the next school year. I have two children, three next year, currently attending school at PCC that have been in person since the beginning of this past school year. Having them home to do their lessons one day each week on Fridays has been an excellent balance for our family and for them academically. There are many reasons why I am advocating for this continued schedule. While I realize that exclusive remote learning did not work well for many families, the schedule of remote learning one day and four days of in-person learning each week has had a positive impact on students and teachers. As many parents have done over this last year, I have discussed various available schedules and experiences with each, with many other families as well as faculty members, and I have found that most all of them have preferred this schedule to all other options, including full-time in-person learning. Not only does this allow the schools to be deep cleaned, which may need to continue in future school years, but allows the students a chance to work independently for one day each week, which strengthens personal responsibility and accountability. Other benefits to this schedule include additional opportunities to gradually move towards a more self-guided learning pace, which is essential in later years of higher learning, and exponentially improved family flexibility and quality experience. As a family, we have been able to spend more quality time together through various trips and activities that were not easily possible before. Most importantly, due to remote learning on Friday, they were not missing schoolwork but were able to work it into and around other learning opportunities and family activities, always able to complete the work due to the flexibility of the media, tablets, and schedule. This has had a huge impact, positive impact, on their accountability, quality of educational opportunities, and family time, and morale. Our family respectfully requests and strongly encourages PCC to continue this schedule option into the next school year. Regards, J. Derek Ivy.
Should probably mention this is the same letter and same source as last month. Item number four on the agenda is awards and recognition. Ms. Killen?
Thank you. I'm very excited to discuss our awards and recognitions tonight. We want to recognize our registrars Connie Ravan, Cindy Guthrie, and April Walford for making our lottery a success. They worked very hard verifying information. They even contacted, and that's before the lottery, making sure all the information was correct, and they also contacted every...
They can't hear. Oh, she got it. She got it.
Okay. They also contacted every student family that got in the lottery before spring break to make sure they knew exactly what they needed, since we were going to be gone for a week, and I just appreciate them so much. They just did an excellent job. Then we want to congratulate our homecoming king and queen, which was J.R. Boulding and Sasha Lombardi. We had homecoming on our soccer field, and it was a wonderful event. Had a lot of guests that came. Some former students came to visit us, and it was really a fun, fun time. Spirit Week and homecoming were a lot of fun. We also want to congratulate Andrew Moore and Sasha Lombardi for being nominated for Best Actor and Best Actress for the Bloomy Awards. They will participate in a two-day audition workshop with industry professionals in April. All nominees will audition for a second time to determine the winners, who will go on to the National High School Musical Theater Awards. One of our seniors, Alessandra Sanders, will graduate high school and with her Associate's in Science degree from Gaston College. We're very proud of her. That's a lot of hard work. And at the elementary campus, in the past, we've had a Booster-Thon fundraiser, but with COVID, they adjusted their program called, to a dance fit program. It's still Booster-Thon, and we raised, the elementary students and parents raised over $35,575 to purchase some new playground equipment. The original goal was like $15,000. So we way exceeded that.
Great job. Well, I'm going to add real quick that I saw a blurb on Facebook, and I think that you guys sent it to us, to the board as well, about the softball player who hit three home runs in the same game. Tell me her name. Who remembers her name?
Abigail Harris.
Abigail Harris.
Abigail Harris.
I thought that was incredible, and I thought that the maturity of her responses to the reporters' questions were really spot-on, and she talked about being excited with playing with her team and those kind of things, and I thought that was a real great representation of Piedmont as well.
Yes, it was.
Item number five on the agenda is approval of previous minutes. The March 16th minutes are in front of you. Has everybody had a chance to look at those?
Yeah, I must have really missed Lisa because I put her on the attendance, but she notified me that she was not here, so I'll take her off the attendance, and we can approve them with her off.
I wish she were here, Lisa.
And I did notice that Holly's name isn't spelled right. She's Holy White.
Yeah, that was on purpose. She must not be able to hear us because she's not laughing.
Holly would hear that.
She would make a comment to that.
I'll make those, I'll make those two changes.
She said she can't hear on that side.
Thank you.
She said your name was misspelled, and he said he did it on purpose.
I didn't want to correct him.
You're Holy White.
Maybe you're unholy.
All right, there are motion with maybe two small corrections.
I make a motion that we approve the March 16th meeting minutes.
Second.
A motion and a second. Let me ask, during discussion, did you intend that your motion included the correction to the attendance and Holly White's name?
Misspelling.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
And the second?
Yes.
My motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Item number six on the agenda is reports, and we start with the Treasurer and Finance Committee report given by the illustrious Mark Stevens.
All right. So tonight, we're going to start with the budget report. There's no changes to our surplus. You will notice at the top under revenue for total fund balance appropriations, that's the $512,000 that we approved last month for the MacBooks and the Chromebooks, and that number is also netted out on line 15 under capitalized expenses. So it did not change the budget at all for the month. There are no other changes to that, to that budget. So we'll move on to the surplus and cash report. This is as of March 31st. Operating fund had $2,451,252.16. Special funds has $14,804.78. The investment account had $1,872,746.34. The IDA account is $56,577.42, petty cash of $1,000. For total, cash is $4,396,380.70. Our anticipated fund balance will start as of June 30th, 2020, with cash and investments on hand was $3,805,945. Our current year budgeted surplus is $739,703.52. We back out the fund balance appropriations of $512,302.2 gives us expected cash and investments on hand June 30th, 2021 of $4,033,645.50. Take out the investment account of $1,872,746.34 gives us expected cash available on June 30th, 2021 of $2,160,899.16. Any questions on that? Okay. And we'll move on to the bond report. This is the bond proceeds still held at US Bank as of March 31st. We'll just look at the ending balances. The bond fund has $711,637.35. The debt service reserve fund has $1,794,022.10, and the project fund is down to $442,411.79 for total bond proceeds at US Bank of $2,948,071.24. Any questions on that? Okay. All right. So that is the budget information. The next thing we have, you actually will see a contract, the audit contract, which is the first thing, and then there are two separate engagement letters. One is for, this all goes together. One is for the school-wide audit, which is actually the first one, I believe. Yeah, yeah, the first engagement letter is for the school-wide audit. We have to approve this every year. Our audit contract has to be sent to the state, has to be filed with the state, but we have to get that approval. The school-wide audit, the fee for it is going to be $13,250. That's in all of this report. I know everybody wanted to read that. And that's in line with, when we talked to the auditor like three years ago, he gave us like a three-year price schedule, and so this is the, this is the 2021 fee, was what we'd already agreed to. And then the retirement plan audit, which is something separate, that's the other engagement letter. That was same thing. We've done it over about a three-year period. The audit estimate is in there between $12,000 and $14,000. The last couple of years, it has maxed out at $14,000, and that's kind of what we expect again this year. Because these are both over $10,000, these will have to be approved. Are there any questions on this? All of the necessary language is in the contract and the...
The no indebtedness clause?
Yes. No indebtedness clause is in there.
I tried reading it all, but I had to skip a few.
Any questions about the auditor's contract?
Did this meet all of your expectations as we've done in the past?
Yeah. It's basically the same as what we've had the last couple of years, so it's just, pretty much you changed the dates.
Gotcha. I make a motion to approve the audit contract as presented by Mr. Stevens tonight.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous.
Okay. All right. And the last thing that I have is, we have to do the second read-through on the updated capitalization policy. Does everybody have the proposed changes? Or do you just have the current policy?
I think we just have the current policy.
Yes, I just have the current policy. Do you need me to print off the changes?
I've got it right here, because I had it from last month, but I didn't know if everybody else had it. I can just read it.
You just point it, point it out?
Yeah. It's just, we're just adding one paragraph. It's, well, I'll read the paragraph, but it's going to be under the capitalization thresholds section is where the new paragraph will go. "It is the policy of Piedmont Community Charter School Incorporated to capitalize all capital assets costing more than $5,000 with an estimated useful life of two or more years. In addition, other items that are purchased and used in large quantities, such as technology, student desks, and office furniture, are capitalized and reported as general capital assets. Improvements are capitalized and depreciated over the remaining useful lives of the related capital assets. The cost of normal maintenance and repairs that do not add to the value of the asset or materially extend asset lives are not capitalized." And again, that paragraph will go on, if you look at the current policy, it'll go as a new paragraph under the capitalization threshold section.
It's going to replace the one that's here now?
No.
It'll be added.
It'll be added to it.
Just add it to underneath?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the paragraph that's there will stay. What I just read will be added to that.
Okay.
Does anybody need to see a written copy of that?
Yeah, I can get copies of it if you want to.
I don't think it's necessary.
Would you mind doing that, Ms. Richards? Thank you. I apologize. That's my fault. I didn't print out the correct one.
That's all right.
Since we're going to vote on it, let's let everybody look at it in writing.
Okay.
Is that the only other thing you have?
That was it, yes. We can just, I guess, come back to that.
Is that going to be part of your report tonight?
Yes, it is.
Do you want to go ahead and tackle that, and then we'll do the calendar after we get back and finish finance?
Okay.
Or is Ms. Richards going to present that?
Well, if you need an explanation, Ms. Richards is going to do it. Can I hold yours? Okay. In order to get all of the testing done, all of the EOC and teacher-made tests at the high school, and the EOGs at the elementary and the middle school, we need to have some students remote. It's different for each campus. We just need the flexibility for our directors to determine, we just need flexibility for our directors to have some students remote on these days so that we can get accommodation students in. You know, typically for elementary, we use Parkwood Baptist Church, and we move kindergarten through second grade over there. Well, because of COVID, we're unable to do that this year. So elementary will need to have their K-2 remote on May 17th and 18th. And then Ms. Richards, she can explain her days for middle school, and Mr. Bridges just needs that one day to get some teacher-made testing done. But we just wanted you to know ahead of time and approve these days for us.
Okay. So what's on the table is additional remote days that are currently not in the calendar, and they're needed for EOC and EOG testing, and there's some COVID interferences that have made it necessary. So the other two campuses need one and two days. Ms. Richards, why do you need so many days?
Why do I need so many days? Mrs. Richards needs so many days to test on our campus because every child on our campus is testing. Grades five through eight, they all take EOGs into EOCs. In order to accommodate standard testing on top of accommodation testing, we also have a space issue. So in order to give our children the optimum testing environment, we do need certain student, groups of students to stay home certain days while we administer tests on campus to another alternative group of students.
So during that time, from May 17th to May 21st, only certain groups of students will be remote for certain days?
Yes.
Okay. And those schedules will be worked out through the, through the teachers, the grade-level teachers and all that?
I have those schedules.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Because of...
I mean, they'll be communicated to the parents?
Yes, sir. I will communicate that.
Yeah. That's what I meant to say.
And those students will likely have assignments and not live instruction those days?
Yes, because our teachers will be administering the tests.
Good point, Lisa. Any questions about remote days needed? Do you need board action for that, Ms. Killen?
Yes, I do, because with the new legislation that we're also going to go over about reopening, it says that boards have to approve additional remote days this year if they're needed for COVID reasons.
I read it wrong.
I have a question. From, from a single student's perspective at the middle school, are they looking at being in one day for testing, out four days, in two days, out three days? What?
It depends on the grade level. So grades five and eight will tend up taking three tests. They take their math, their reading, and their science. Grades six and seven take two. So looking at the way it's on paper laid out, it would be two days on, two days off, or three days on one day, or Friday's a remote day anyway, but three days on, two days off, because we included Friday in that round of testing.
Will kids be coming in to test on Friday?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So it's not an additional remote day, but you will have a group of kids coming in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions about the additional remote days needed to complete testing? If not, there are motion?
Make a motion that we accept the additional remote days for testing.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Killen, can you confirm that Mr. McCraney's thumbs up on that?
Mr. McCraney, do you agree?
Yes, I do.
All right. So just to be clear, we're going back to the 6A, to the Treasurer and Finance Committee report. Mr. Stevens has read the addition to the, to the school policy, which, to the school capitalization policy. It's now in front of the board on this piece of paper with the highlighted area being the added paragraph. Are there any questions about that paragraph, or why the policy's being changed, anything like that?
You're basically clarifying and adding more structure to it, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's, a lot of it has to do with, last month, we approved the purchase of the MacBooks and the Chromebooks and all that, and in years past, computers were a lot more expensive. They just automatically were capitalized because of the cost. Now, if you look, our, our original policy, if you read it, we would have to expense each individual computer, but we, we approved $500,000 for the purchase. That needs to be lumped together and spread out over time. And it's just clarification. This, this policy actually matches a lot of schools across the state in the policy. This comes from our attorney, written like that, and our auditor as well.
We, we had an antiquated policy that basically made us, it counted against our budgetary expenses when we took money out of, out of the bank that we had and had as surplus, and we spent that money, it counted against our budget during the audit period, which was then used to calculate our...
Debt coverage ratio.
Debt service coverage ratio.
Days cash on hand.
And days cash on hand at the end. The covenants of the, of our bond loan.
This way, it doesn't count because it spreads out over the years, right?
This way, it doesn't count because we're not spending money that's out of our yearly budget. We're spending money that's already in the bank.
Okay.
And that money that's in the bank is accounted for through the days cash on hand in the covenant. So it was basically being counted against us twice and being...
Oh. Yeah. This is my plan.
Yeah. So spending, spending money you already have shouldn't, shouldn't be held against the school.
Right.
Is the way I looked at it. Are there a motion?
Move to approve the updated capitalization policy.
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe the motion is unanimous.
Mr. McCraney raised his hand.
He's a thumbs up? Thank you, Mr. McCraney. The motion is unanimous. Is that it, Mark?
That's all I have, yes.
Thank you. All right. Item 6B is the head school report. I'll hand it over to you, Ms. Killen.
All right. Well, the first report I have is our compliance submission report. So every year, as part of the charter school's requirement that we submit to them for the performance framework, is the parent grievance policy, and since we have submitted this policy before and it has not changed, all we had to do was submit a policy verification note that was signed by me and the board chair, and that was done on April 13th. It was due April 30th. Next, we submitted, again, a policy verification note for the employee grievance policy and with the same due dates. It was due on 4/30. We turned it in on 4/13. Another item is the fire, OSHA, and other required health and safety inspections. So we have provided those as of April 13th, and we did not have to file anything for our bond loan this month.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we have our enrollment report. We currently have 1,758 students. I have included the withdrawal report for you. And then at our lottery, we had 1,231 applications, and there were 224 seats awarded. It went very smoothly. Of course, we had a lot of students, you know, admitted to kindergarten, 132. So that takes a big part of that number.
So 132 of the 224 was kindergarten?
Yes.
Wow.
And we had like 69 siblings. And we had like 69 siblings. Or maybe it was 59. 59 siblings. I'll err on the side of caution. 59 siblings. Pretty unbelievable. I think two sets of twins. We had like six sets of twins this past year that got in. All right. If you don't have any questions about that, the next topic I'd like to talk about is to officially move to Plan A for sixth through 12th grade. I have the number of students that are currently in person and remote for you on the chart. That was updated as of April 14th. We are continuing, if a parent contacts us and says they would like for their child to be in person, we are continuing to work them in. I feel confident that we currently have everybody in that wants to be in. But by going to Plan A, that's going to help us with testing because the, you know, the distancing has changed now to three feet instead of six feet. We can get students out of overflow. And then if more people want to come back, they won't have to go to overflow. They'll be able to go in to a classroom. So I want to read to you the reopening guidance that we were given from the Office of Charter Schools. This is what I'm, I'm following. Per the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Strong Schools North Carolina Public Health Toolkit from June 8th, 2020, "All public schools are directed to have three plans in place to ensure continuity of education services should the state's COVID-19 metrics change significantly, requiring additional restrictions to control the spread of disease. These reopening plans will be foundational for a successful and agile academic school year. The three required reopening plans are Plan A, minimal distancing; Plan B, moderate physical distancing; Plan C, remote learning." Of course, you know, we developed these plans back in July. Operationalized for all public school units from the most recent version of the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Strong Schools Toolkit, page 3, and North Carolina Session Law 2021-4, no later than April 1st, 2021, the following guidelines shall apply. Kindergarten through 5th grade students and public school units must provide in-person instruction at least four days a week while following the public health protocols in the Strong Schools North Carolina Toolkit, with one exception. Schools serving children kindergarten through 5th grade do not need to adhere to the six-feet physical social distancing detailed on page 6 of the toolkit. Now, we went to Plan A for K-5 back in October when they first said we could. So this is really for schools that have not, had not done that. They had to do it by April 1st. So we were already compliant with that. Sixth through 12th grade students, public school units must provide in-person instruction either in Plan A at least four days a week or Plan B to the maximum extent possible, six feet, while following all of the protocols. All school boards that choose to return under Plan A, 6th through 12th students must participate in the ABC Collaborative. So I'm going to update you on that. I have an email from Dave Machado from the Office of Charter Schools. Charter schools do not have to participate in the ABC Collaborative. Other regular public schools do.
Tell us what the ABC Collaborative was.
The state is paying the ABC Collaborative with Duke University to keep up with the data of COVID cases in all of the public schools. So at the end of every month, the public schools have to submit their numbers to them. Now, when this first came out, I contacted the ABC Collaborative and Dave Machado to find out what exactly we would need to do. I wasn't concerned about it because our nurses have such detailed contact tracing and detailed record-keeping with COVID-19. I figured it would be easy.
It's just a matter of what format they wanted.
Yeah. I just wanted to know what, what did it look like? So the ABC Collaborative did contact me and said, you know, we'll be happy to work with you, you know, when the time comes. Then I get the email from Dave Machado that says charter schools do not have to participate with them. So that's good. There's, we don't have to put one more thing on our nurses.
Right. But just to be clear, no less record-keeping or contact tracing is going to be done in the school because we're not working with them?
Absolutely not.
We are still keeping up records and, and, and making sure that anyone who could be a contact is being contacted.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And not only have our nurses served our school community, they have served the greater community in working with the Health Department. So remote learning options. All schools must also offer full-time remote instruction for high-risk students and for families opting for remote learning for their children. We are already doing that and have been doing that. Local flexibility and planning for different scenarios. Schools have flexibility in how they choose to operationally implement the public health requirements in this toolkit. Further, school leaders should continue to maintain plans for three different potential scenarios depending on what restrictions are necessary at any time in the school year to control the spread. And when it comes to sanitizing on Fridays, I do want you to know that that only takes two hours. We have purchased extra electrostatic sprayers as soon as we were able to get them. And the two large campuses, high school and elementary, have two of those sprayers. That cuts the time down. They can do it in about an hour and a half. So I'll give them an extra 30 minutes, two hours. So from 4:00 to 6:00 on Fridays is plenty of time to sanitize all of the buildings. Minimal physical distancing is Plan A. All public health requirements in this toolkit, except the six feet of physical distancing, are required. And then, you know, the same is what we're doing right now for Plan B. Moderate physical distancing, staying in Plan B. We are still following all protocols. On the second page, full remote learning, Plan C. Full remote learning is no longer an option for daily instruction. Local school boards have the authority to make day-to-day decisions concerning whether shifting individual schools or individual classrooms that are providing in-person instruction to remote instruction is necessary due to COVID-19 exposures that result in insufficient school personnel or required student quarantines. All local school boards shall report any shift by school or classroom from in-person to remote instruction to the Department of Public Instruction within 72 hours of the shift. So as of April 1st, if we have a classroom or a grade level that we have to send remote, I'll need to send that report in to the Department of Public Instructions. I actually send it to the Office of Charter Schools. That's the process. See Session Law, and it gives you the law. Local boards shall provide to the Department of Public Instruction all documentation from the local Health Department regarding required quarantines of students and/or staff. So that's if we have to send a whole class home or a grade level or a building. Charter schools. If the governing board of a charter school determines that additional remote instruction is needed to ensure the health and safety of students, it may provide for additional remote learning days in Session Law 2020-49. And this only applies to this year. Exercising the right to in-person instruction. Any student opting to return to in-person instruction shall be permitted to do so no later than April 1st, 2021.
Which we believe we already have that.
Yes.
Existing, right?
So my request is that we officially go to Plan A for 612.
Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we officially go to Plan A for grades 6 through 12.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I did hear Mr. McCraney that time, so the motion's unanimous. So we are now on Plan A.
Wonderful. Thank you. Next, we need to discuss the calendar for next year. And we have a presentation, so we're going to pull the screen down. So I would like to invite the board members down to the audience seats. And this way, anyone watching our meeting will be able to see the presentation also.
What about our folks on Zoom? You're going to carry them down there?
Yeah.
All right. Keep your mics on and probably take your packet because there's stuff you may want to study in particular on the calendar.
I also have two larger calendars for you in the packet if you need to see, you know, that will help you see it better.
This will be broadcast.
You're good. I'm staying.
Okay. He don't care, dude.
I think that's the way to do them. Jeff's not following you.
He's not.
You want me to move everyone?
That's it. There you go.
I can't even hear. My ears are half-stopped up tonight.
Will y'all give me a signal when everything's working? Okay, great. Thank you. All right. As we prepared the calendar for next year, there were a couple of things we had to consider. The first thing, the remote learning, is that remote learning, the state required us to put in the calendar for 2021. Hold on a minute. Let me start that over. All right. So last year for this year, we were required to put five remote learning days in the calendar. And we've also received guidance from the Office of Charter Schools regarding remote days for next year. And I'm going to read you that guidance word for word, what they sent us. The second thing we needed to consider is Gaston County's calendar. And they have revised their calendar to end first semester before winter break. Now, they also did that this year, but all public schools were told that they had to start August 17th. And that was in response to COVID to add another week, basically, to the school year. So this particular school year, Gaston County started August 17th. We still started the next week as we were opening a new campus, bringing on 40 new employees and 500 more kids. So that's why our calendar did not really match theirs this year. So we do want to match Gaston County's as much as we can because it helps our families and it also helps our employees that might have kids in Gaston County schools. And one thing that we've wanted to do for a while is end our semester at winter break so that you don't have that two weeks where the kids aren't, you know, they're just taking a break and then come in and prepping for exams. So we've addressed both of those items in putting the calendar together for next year. And I'll go over each of those during the presentation. So this is our guidance, word for word, from the Office of Charter Schools newsletter. Regarding next year, school calendar and remote options for 2021 school year, charters can begin to create their calendars for next year without action by the General Assembly. Using the statutes that applied pre-COVID, for the 2020-2021 school year, the General Assembly created special calendar requirements and allowed remote learning under certain conditions for all public schools. However, those laws will not apply after the 2021 school year. For the 2021-22 school year, charters will follow the law as it existed pre-COVID. They must provide 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction over nine months. Regarding remote instruction, there is no current authorization in statute for any public schools except for the two pilot virtual charters to conduct remote learning for the 2021-22 school year. Of course, the General Assembly may enact a new law to apply to the 21-22 school year that addresses whether remote learning can be used and if so, how. But since no law has been enacted yet, charters can proceed with setting up their calendars using the same requirements that applied at the beginning of the 2019-2020 school year, but do not have authorization to include remote instruction for 21-22 at this time.
So, just so I'm clear on this, there's no law that allows us to provide remote learning for the 2021-22 school year currently?
Correct.
And so the calendar that we're going to present tonight is probably going to reflect that since we're not allowed to do it at this point?
Correct.
All right.
And I did talk to Dave Machado today and asked him. I said, who will make the decision if we have remote learning next year? And he said, the General Assembly.
If we'll be allowed to have it.
So those kids who are home, who have been home, won't be able to remain there starting next year?
Not unless the General Assembly, because the law was written for this school year. So they would have to enact a new law. And we need to get a calendar out so that people can start planning vacation and all. We are getting calls. And we may or may not have to come back and, you know, revisit it and revise it based on if, if there are any new decisions by the General Assembly.
Right. Which could go either way, right? Could, could allow it, could require it, could not allow it.
Yeah.
We have no idea which way it's going. So at this point, it's not allowed, and so it's not being planned for.
Correct.
So the calendar that you're going to present will be based on what was allowed before COVID and pre-COVID? But whatever we, whichever calendar we decide on, we can still make changes if the General Assembly allows us to. So we could, we could still make some changes?
Yes, we can make changes. All right. Next slide, please. All right. So here's the pre-COVID law that we follow. Each local board of education shall adopt a school calendar consisting of 215 days, of all which shall fall within the fiscal year. A school calendar shall include the following. A minimum of 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction covering at least nine calendar months. The local board shall designate when the instructional days, excuse me, shall occur. The number of instructional hours in an instructional day may vary according to local board policy and does not have to be uniform among the schools in the administrative unit. Local boards may approve school improvement plans that include days with varying amounts of instructional time. If school is closed early due to inclement weather, the day and the scheduled amount of instructional hours may count towards the required minimum to the extent allowed by state board policy. The school calendar shall include a plan for making up days and instructional hours missed when schools are not open due to inclement weather. Okay. So as far, this gives you a little bit more detail. As far as the number of instructional hours in an instructional day, we consider six hours to be a full instructional day, which is standard among charter schools and LEAs. When determining the number of instructional hours in a day, we cannot count time for lunch, class changes, homeroom, or other transitional time where instruction is not taking place. Also, our 10-month teacher contracts, or any other employee that's 10 months, is based on that 215 days a daily rate. So all of that works together, ties together. All right. So draft one, and I'll tell you right now, this is the one that I prefer. On this calendar, the first day of school is August 16th. And then first semester will end in December. December 17th will be the end of- end in December, December 17th will be the end of second quarter or first semester. We'll start out with fewer teacher workdays, they'll just be, you know, one week of teacher And in this calendar, I'm just going to see if I can read up here, here we go, 1,038 instructional hours. And we like to put more instructional hours in there in case we have inclement weather, and then we don't have to make the day up. And so it's always bode well for us to do that. However, we do have makeup days in there if we were to go over the additional hours that are built in. But it is always nice not to have to make those hours up if you build in some hours, those days up, I mean.
41.
And last day of school is, I can't see, May 26?
26.
Okay, May 26.
Yep.
There you go, yeah, May 26, end of fourth quarter. Before Memorial Day.
Does this have the same start and end dates as Gaston County schools?
The next one does.
The next one does, okay.
Yeah, the next one.
Can we look at draft two? All right, there are several LEAs that have filed for flexibility with the calendar dates. Right now, there's a law on the books that all local school districts have to follow that says they can't begin school prior to the 23rd, and that's because of tourism. I think it was called the Tourism Bill. Charter schools, that does not apply. We can start and end anytime we want to. So Gaston County's current schedule starts on the 23rd, and this one mirrors it as far as the start date, end date, holidays. It would be the same for the teachers, we would just have more teacher workdays. The first two would be optional, the 10th and the 11th of August, they could take personal days if they wanted to, if they didn't want to come in on those optional days. But it does kind of lop-side first semester. There's a week less in first semester. And if the calendar flexibility gets granted for the schools that have requested it.
Is Gaston County?
Yes, Gaston County is one of those. If it, if the waiver is granted, they'll be able to start prior to the 23rd, so probably the week before. My thinking is, to protect our ADM, if we go ahead and approve draft one, which starts on the 16th, let's say the county doesn't get their waiver, it would be much easier to delay the start date than to say it's going to start on the 23rd and pull it back. Because people are going to go ahead and start planning their vacations.
So if I can use to start the same day that Gaston County is, which is quoted?
Yes.
And it's an easier transition if we indicate?
It's an easier transition if we indicate that we're going to start on the 16th and move it to the 23rd, instead of saying it's going to be on the 23rd and then try to move it back to the 16th, because people will have vacations planned and all that kind of thing.
Yes.
Camps and all that.
I know that that calendar flexibility has passed either the House or the Senate, I don't remember which one, and now it's in a committee for the other. I talked to Dave Machado about that again today, and he said, you know, all I know is it's in committee, and it was on one of our calls today with DPI that it is in committee.
So in committee just means too, that they don't have a day when they're going to yet approve the waiver? So that's, it's just, it's just in waiting?
Yeah, I don't know how long it stays in committee, I guess it depends on the complexity of the issue.
Do they try to have it done per a specific month for these reasons that you have to plan? Like May, June?
No.
It's brand-new, like the flexibility is new, right? I mean, it's only come about this year.
I think some schools tried a year or so ago, and I think Lincoln County got approved, they're doing a little more of a year-round schedule, I believe, but it's been a little while since I've looked into the details of that, but I think it will probably get approved because of the COVID issue and the learning loss issue, that might be, that might help them approve it, considering they started schools earlier last year. But again, I have no way of knowing what the state agencies are, what kind of decisions they're going to make. I'm just trying to plan in a way that will protect our ADM from the beginning.
So both of these calendars would have the first semester ending before the Christmas break, is that right? So I think that represents a significant change to what we've done in the past, right?
It does.
Do we expect that we'll see better first semester and, of course, testing?
Yes, that is our hope, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Because we'll be able to go straight into the prepping, getting ready for the test, the reviewing, that's the correct word, reviewing for the test, and then taking it, instead of having two weeks off, then coming back, reviewing and taking it. That's something as administrators, we've talked about for years, really, you know, that we would like to get to that.
Definitely seems to make a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, then you can really relax over Christmas break, the students can. They don't have to be concerned about, oh gosh, when I get back, I've got to prep for exams, you know, they've got it behind them. Relieve some anxiety, maybe.
You mentioned that buffer for snow days, is it typical that a calendar has just one or two extra days as a buffer for snow days? Because I think draft one has just one day, and draft two has like two extra days.
Well, we get to use our hours also.
Say, don't we go, we go by hours, right?
Yeah, we go by hours, but we also have to put some days in there too, so we won't use the days unless, until we use the hours.
Okay.
Because I don't know if you remember, I think it was two years ago now that since we had a snow day, we would do the call and say, we had enough hours built in our schedule, we don't have to make it up.
Okay. Oh, and I forgot to include the half-day hours, I was just including the full-day hours.
Any other questions about the calendar? Anything more you want to add, or should we move back to the?
I think, can we go back to draft one? And my request is that we adopt draft one to begin school on August the 16th, and just be aware that as new legislation comes about, we'll need to meet again and make necessary changes if they make changes.
Are we finished with the presentation portion? If so, then we'll transition back to the chairs.
All right, we're going to transition back, thank you.
All right, so we've seen our presentation on the calendar, and two drafts have been presented. The administration has recommended draft one, indicating that we will start classes on April, sorry, August 16th, and for the reasons that they went over. Any other discussion or questions? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the 2021-2022 school calendar draft one. Second.
Draft one has been motioned and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous, and we have a school calendar for next year.
Thank you very much.
We'll note again that it's subject to change based on legislative rulings, and we will adapt through the summer as it goes.
Thank you. I want to go over just some dates, so state testing starts May the 17th. Our next board meeting is May 18th. June 3rd is high school graduation, and we are having so much fun getting ready for that. Just the anticipation of it is very exciting, very happy for our students. It will be at Hound's Drive-In, again, just like last year, and you're certainly all invited, we would love to have you there. We'll have you a seat down close if you are able to come to graduation. June 5th, we're looking at doing a strategic planning session from 9 o'clock to 11 o'clock. And then we had talked about, I had talked with Mr. Satterfield about changing our June board meeting to June 8th, and in July, we would like to have our annual board training with Tom Miller, either on July 24th or the 31st.
Anybody have any conflicts for June 8th, that they know of?
I have to go too much.
Okay, so likely we'll change that board meeting. All right, item 6C on the, is that it? Ms. Killen? You're complete?
Yes, I'm complete, thank you, sorry.
Item 6C on the agenda is enrichment committee report.
No report this month.
Item 6D is athletics committee report.
We will be meeting next week. I was going to mention about Abigail Harris.
Oh, I'm sorry, I stole your thunder.
That's all right, that's all right, but we're real proud of her, as well as all of our teams and athletes, and so we've, this has been a good year.
Do you have her stat line?
Her who?
Her stat line, her hits and?
She was four-for-five in that one game, and then she's also legging out a triple for the Patriots.
Three home runs and a triple.
Oh, wait a minute, here we go.
And a grand slam.
She's batting, in, this is her first season, yeah, this is her first season. She's batting 400 as of April 18th, with three home runs, 14 RBIs, and is currently on a four-game hitting streak. Wow.
Pretty amazing.
Let her hit their stride.
Glad to have her. She's good.
Item 6E, facilities committee. I guess the biggest thing that's kind of in the works is the weight training and maintenance building. We received numbers back on that, and a little bit higher than we anticipated. Right now, the number, the lowest number that we've gotten back for that building is 535,000. There's a meeting Thursday, I think, with the architect and a contractor who supplied that pricing, that estimate, to try to get that down under 500,000. There's also an additional, I think we had plugged in 10,000 for weight room equipment and those kind of things, and we've gotten a more serious estimate on that, and it's around 55,000. So likely, we're going to be looking at spending in the neighborhood of 700,000 to 750,000 for that building, so the board's going to have to decide whether that's something they want to go forward with or not. I think it's probably the right thing to do, we do need that facility, and we have classes already planned for it next year, but of course, that wouldn't stop the board from waiting another year or something like that if they, if they felt like it was necessary. So currently, there's slated to be approximately 300,000 that will be left over from this building after we've bought lights and other things. We had to spend an additional $150,000 on lights and audio equipment for the, to fix the issues that we've had in here. I'll let you know too, that we are pursuing a remedy from the original company that supplied the lighting and audio equipment, so maybe we'll see something back on that, but we can't count on that. And we should, I guess, also know that there's, there's a couple of things out there that are working in our favor as far as funding and, I don't know, Mark, did you, I think you've mentioned them before, but the employee tax credit things?
Yeah, the employee retention credit, and I don't have it right in front of me, but what was that number that they sent back?
1.1 million.
Yeah, and that's just from the first quarter.
Yes.
So, from the first quarter, the accounting company that we've hired to advise us on this, whether we're eligible for this or not, has indicated that we would likely be eligible for about a million dollars coming back from the state, money that we've already paid, and supposedly, they're going to write us a check, so we'll see.
Sounds good.
I don't know if they'll spread that out over time or what they'll do, but.
It's supposed to come as a lump sum.
Right.
We are checking the mail closely.
We have alerted the financial assistants as they open the mail to let us know when the check comes.
Yeah, if you see a big check, please let us know.
I might escort them to the bank.
Yeah.
For fun.
So, so there were those things, we're likely eligible for second quarter as well, right?
Yes.
And there's some eligibility from last year as well, so those are things that are working in our favor, of course, can't count your chickens before they hatch, but we, we would have to allocate likely another 400,000 to 500,000 to get the building built. And I don't know that we've, and finance committee, if we've drilled down to make sure that we would have our covenants still in place and all that if we, for our bond loan. I don't think we've gotten to that level of detail yet, but first thing is, we're going to try to get the building number down as low as we can, put together a complete program so that, bring it to the board and say, here's, here's what it's going to cost to do this building, board decide, move forward, wait a year, do whatever we're going to do. Everybody, maybe we'll have some more information from the Employee Retention Act as well. So that's the biggest thing going on, and I think the lights are the other biggest thing, and we're, we're winding down, you know, if we spend that last 300,000 that's in the bond loan, that'll be it for that, and so we're done spending and I'll be gone.
Spend your money?
Any more questions about that or anything? Any more questions about that or anything?
But it was well spoken.
Can I mention one other thing?
Sure.
We have two federal grants that we were given, the details about Thursday before Good Friday. It's called SIR 2 and SIR 3, that we're eligible for, and we have to write the grants and submit them by May the 7th. So it's a very short timeframe. One of the requirements for SIR 2 and SIR 3 is that once the money, once our grant is approved, we have to post our reopening plan and put it out there for public comment for 30 days. So basically, it would just be like after tonight, we'll, we'll spend the time this week updating our plan. That's just one of the requirements. And I didn't know, Mr. Satterfield, if you wanted that communications committee to work with us on the, Alex's committee, I can't remember what you called it, that helped us with the covenants, not the, I mean, the public comments communication, maybe work with us on communicating about that grant and that reopening plan.
It's okay with me. Who was that? Jennifer Barker?
I think it was Alex and Jennifer Barker.
And Lisa.
And Lisa?
And Lisa, okay.
All right, y'all comfortable doing that?
Yeah, because we're going to be working on it this week, next week, and we can run things by and work on the communication together.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, at the end, you know, I'd like to just read it before we're done.
Oh, yes. I mean, you know, we can do whatever you want, we can have a special board meeting.
I'm happy for you guys to work it out.
Okay.
Just look at it. Brings us to, I think we're complete with that. That brings us to governance committee, item 6G. Got a couple of readings of a couple of things.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruitt.
Thank you, Mr. Satterfield. We do indeed have some first readings tonight. The initial is the first read-through of the school-based mental health policy. You'll see in front of you, the first document is to add new employee policy section 211 as follows. 211 dot required employee training and protocols, 211 dot one school-based mental health plan, training and suicide risk protocol. Basic requirements pursuant to G dot S dot 115 C dash 218 dot 75. The school will adopt a mental health plan here from now on noted as plan, including a mental health training program and suicide risk referral protocol according to requirements established by the State Board of Education. School shall provide its adopted mental health training program and suicide risk referral protocol to school personnel at no cost to employees. Employees shall receive an initial mental health training of at least six hours and subsequent annual mental health training of at least two hours. The initial mental health training shall occur within the first six months of employment. Subsequent mental health training shall occur in the following school year and annually thereafter. In the discretion of the school, the initial mental health training may be waived in the event an employee completed an initial mental health training at another K through 12 school unit. School personnel may meet mental health training requirements in any of the following ways. One, electronic delivery of instruction. Two, video conferencing. Three, group in-person training. Four, self-study. Minimum content, the mental health program and model suicide risk referral protocol training shall be provided to school personnel who work with students. The mental health program training shall include, without limitation, the following topics. A, youth mental health. B, suicide prevention. C, substance abuse. D, sexual abuse prevention. E, sex trafficking prevention. F, teenage dating violence. The model suicide risk referral protocol shall include, without limitation, A, guidelines on the identification of students at risk of suicide, and B, procedures and referral sources that address actions that should be taken to address students identified as at-risk. State auditing and updates. By September 15th of each year, the school shall report to the Department Public Instruction on, one, the content of its school-based mental health plan, including its mental health training program and suicide risk referral protocol, and two, its prior school year compliance with mental health planning and training requirements. The school shall update the school-based mental health plan in accordance with any updates provided by the State Board. 211 dot two, employee sexual abuse and sex trafficking training pursuant to N dot C dot G dot S dot 115 C dash 375 dot 20. School will train regarding child sexual abuse and sex trafficking awareness and reporting requirements. At least two hours of such training will be offered every even-numbered school year, beginning with the 2020-21 academic year to all staff who work directly with students. The training shall include, but not be limited to, best practices from the field of prevention, the grooming process of sexual predators, the warning signs of sexual abuse and sex trafficking, how to intervene when sexual abuse or sex trafficking is suspected or disclosed, legal responsibilities for reporting sexual abuse or sex trafficking, and available resources for assistance. This training shall be provided by knowledgeable experts, who may include local non-governmental organizations, local law enforcement officers, or other court officers.
We're going to wait for questions.
Yeah, does anybody see anything that...
I think the best way maybe to go about this, since this is a bit lengthy tonight, is when we finish a document, if you've got edits or ideas or suggestions, maybe we address them now while it's fresh on your mind.
Does "at-risk" need to be in quotes? It's the next to last paragraph, the last two words.
Next to last paragraph.
Because you're identifying "as" at risk.
Is that something you've seen before as a category, "at-risk"?
Well, being that it is a category or that you're naming something.
She just wanted that.
I would think you would.
She wants that in quotes.
Oh, which one?
First page.
First page, oh, first page. I'm just asking, yeah.
So you're on the first page.
Yeah, where it says, "Address students identified as..."
Next to the last paragraph.
Yeah, "at-risk."
And you're wanting that in...
No, I'm just asking, shouldn't that be in quotes? Because you're identifying...
As it's identified as a term to refer to.
Right, it's a common term, yeah.
Ms. Killen, would that be a question for our...
Just ask David Hoffstettler.
Yeah, that may be a question for our attorney.
Yeah.
We can put that down as...
Because you're naming, yeah.
We can put that down as an item to throw his way. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Any other comments?
And we are currently working on our plan, just so you know. It's due July 1st, and we have a team of our social worker, our nurses, and our guidance counselor, as well as the three school directors, who are working on our mental health plan. And that'll be something we present to you prior to July 1st for approval. I hope we can get it done by June 8th, but if not, we may have to meet again just to go over that.
All right, hearing done, no other questions, we'll continue. Ms. Killen, the next part, under PCCF, proposed draft revision to policies 207 dot 13 dash dot 14, that's the next section, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 2017 dot 13 dot sexual harassment, because of its particular pervasiveness in the workplace, the school establishes this particular policy regarding sexual harassment. No employee shall engage in sexual harassment against any student, other employee, or another person in the school community. Sexual harassment includes any unwelcome sexual advance, request for sexual favors, or sexually suggestive comments when submission to the content, pardon me, conduct is made either explicitly or implicitly as a term or condition of an individual's employment or education. Submission to or rejection of such conduct by an individual is used as a basis for student or employment decisions affecting such individuals, or, number three, such conduct has the purpose or effect of unreasonably interfering with an individual's academic or work performance, or creating an intimidating, hostile, or offensive working or educational environment. Examples of sexual harassment include, but are not limited to, number one, deliberate, unwelcome touching; number two, suggestions or demands for sexual involvement accompanied by implied or overt promises or threats, pressure for sexual activity; number three, continued or repeated offensive sexual flirtations, advances, or propositions; continued or repeated verbal remarks about an individual's body; number four, sexually degrading words used toward or in the presence, presence of an individual or to describe an individual; or, number five, the display of sexually suggestive objects, signals, or pictures. A hostile environment exists if the conduct of a sexual nature is sufficiently severe, persistent, or pervasive to limit a person's ability to participate in or benefit from the educational program, or creates a hostile or abusive educational or work environment. Romantic or sexual advances towards students by employees, or romantic or sexual relationships between school system employees and students are always prohibited in all circumstances. Employees engaging in inappropriate relationships with students or employees who fail to report such relationships by others to the head of school shall be subject to disciplinary action up to and including dismissal. 207 dot 14, reporting harassment charges. All complaints of harassment shall be promptly and thoroughly investigated, documented, and monitored with appropriate follow-up and disciplinary action taken to remedy any act of harassment. The following process shall apply. All complaints, investigations, and follow-up actions shall be confidential. Only individuals and employees in a need-to-know position are entitled to receive, report, or provide such information. Any person who is subject to or aware of any harassing behavior may report the matter orally or in writing to a supervisor. Any employee who knows of such behavior shall immediately report such information to a supervisor, and the supervisor shall promptly inform the head of school. If a supervisor is included, a report may be made directly to the head of school. If the head of school is involved, a report may be made to the board chairperson or vice chairperson. I think we've got an accidental exclamation point and a number 29 there on the next line.
And you did read, if a supervisor is included, which is actually if a supervisor is involved, a report may be directly to the head of school.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. But the wording's correct in there.
Okay. Any disciplinary action taken shall be reasonably calculated to end any harassment. No employer or student shall be subject to negative or retaliatory action for reporting or assisting in the investigation of an allegation of harassment. Any questions on that page? Besides the two things that we commented on? All right, hearing done, we'll move on. PCCS proposed draft revisions to policies 207 dot 13 through 14, DRH 3 dot A dot 21. The head of school or his designee shall coordinate compliance with all applicable laws with respect to sexual harassment, particularly Title IX of the Education Amendments of 1972. Nothing in this day or any other school policy shall be construed to prevent any person from pursuing any other remedies available under state or federal law.
She would say, the head of school, or his, or her...
Or their designation.
Or their.
Their designation?
I think "their" may be more appropriate.
That's good.
I'm sorry, I kind of went from, no, that's the right order.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll show you there. Any other questions on that page? All right, hearing done, we'll move on. Next page that I have is, make sure you have the same page that I have. Make sure we're on the same, yes, thank you. Make sure we all have the same page. PCCS proposed draft revisions to student policy 300 dot 14, DRH comma 3 dot A dot 21. 304 dot 14, sexual harassment. Of the various types of harassment under the school's general harassment policy, sexual harassment is worthy of special consideration. This includes sexual harassment between any member of the school community, including student to student, employee to student, student to employee, and employee to employee, or harassment in any, in any other school-related relationship. Simply put, no person shall engage in sexual harassment against any student, other employee, or another person in the school community, and having found to do so shall be appropriately and promptly dealt with in terms of penalties, prohibitions, suspension, or employment termination as the case may require. Sexual harassment includes any unwelcome sexual advance, request for sexual favors, or sexually suggestive comments when an individual's employment or education is either explicitly or implicitly conditioned upon submitting to the conduct. An individual submitting to or rejecting such conduct is used as a basis for student or employment decisions affecting that individual, or such conduct has the purpose or effect of interfering with an individual's academic or work performance, or creates an intimidating, hostile, or offensive working or educational environment. Examples of sexual harassment include, but are not limited to, deliberate and welcome touching, suggestions or demands for sexual involvement accompanied by implied or overt promises or threats, pressure for sexual activity, continued or repeated offensive sexual flirtations, advances, or propositions, continued or repeated verbal remarks about an individual's body, sexually degrading words used toward or in the presence of an individual or to describe an individual, or the display of sexually suggestive objects, signals, or pictures. A hostile environment exists if the conduct of a sexual nature is sufficiently severe, persistent, or pervasive to limit a person's ability to participate in or benefit from the educational program, or if it creates a hostile or abusive educational or work environment. School employees making romantic or sexual advances toward or engaging in sexual relationships with students is always prohibited in all circumstances. School employees are prohibited from engaging in inappropriate relationships with students and are required to report such relationships or reasonable suspicions thereof to the head of school or other appropriate supervisory official. Procedures for reporting suspected harassment or sexual harassment are outlined in the Any questions on that page?
Jeff, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Should that one clarify if the head of school is the offender, that again, it should be directed to the chairperson?
Or vice chair.
This is the student policy that we're reading. The first one we read was the employee policy.
I guess I was looking at... I guess I was looking at it like if the head of the school was involved with the student. Is that included in this? Which one is that included in?
It says, "or other appropriate supervisory official."
It does say that, and I just wonder if it needs to specify the board person.
It doesn't hurt, right?
I mean, it could be a principal, or a teacher, or anybody else.
Yeah, a student can go to anybody else in the school.
Okay.
Whoever the student feels comfortable with.
Okay.
Maybe that needs... Because this is for the students, right?
Yeah, this one was the student policy, so, okay.
Maybe that should read, "or other appropriate school employee," or...
Or maybe like you just said, like whoever the student is comfortable telling.
Right.
Because then they're charged to go to...
Instead of "other appropriate supervisory official."
Yeah, supervisory official is probably not the right word. I would say, I mean, I'd just spell it out. Any other, teacher, vice principal, principal.
Teacher.
Trusted adult.
Trusted adult, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Trusted adult.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would probably, would be fine.
Jennifer, tell me what part you were reading from.
Uh...
I was trying to find it, too.
Third sentence from the bottom.
There it is, yeah.
So, everybody's in agreeance to just say, "other..."
Trusted adult.
Okay, so, strike "appropriate supervisory official," and just put "trusted adult."
Wait a minute, maybe "associated with the school," or...
Yeah, I think that's why I was going down the road of teacher, counselor.
Right.
Vice principal, principal.
Or other.
Just naming all those people.
Could it say, "or other appropriate supervisory official," or "trusted adult"? I mean, just add "or trusted adult" to it?
Or "trusted school employee."
Sure.
Well, it says "supervisory official." That's talking about other school employees, right?
Yeah, but I mean, they may not recognize the school counselor as a supervisory official.
Right.
If I read between the lines, kind of what several people are trying to say, we're also trying to make it read to where the kids can understand it as well, right?
Right.
Okay, so, I say, strike "appropriate supervisory official," because that's going to go over some kids' heads.
Right.
And I would just say, "other trusted adult employee." I think a kid would understand the word "employee."
Employed by the school.
School employee.
Or other...
Why don't we ask the teachers?
Or other trusted.
All right, Ms. Baird, you're on the spot. Give me a moment to rest for a minute.
What would a kid reading that understand that they could go to any employee of the school?
How would you verbalize that?
Is that a word, verbalize?
Yeah.
Because they trusted adult that works with the school.
Or other trusted, what'd you say? Staff?
I was saying, I was saying, "other adult employee," is what I was saying, but I just think we just need to make it to where they get it, to where they can go to a teacher.
Well, I like the word "trusted" that Alex said. I think that's really important.
Or "other trusted..."
You don't even have to say...
School employee.
Other trusted school employee. Okay?
So, that begs the question, if we're going to say they can go to anybody, do we need to also say that anybody who gets a report is required to report?
Absolutely.
Didn't we already say that?
No, I read that. I don't know if it was in the first one, or if it wasn't.
Is that in the first one?
I think that's already listed that...
It says that in the first one.
That if someone reports to you, you're required to report it to your supervisor.
I think we also need to include in this one, since this is the students, that if they do make a report, they will not be, I mean...
They'll be anonymous.
Technically, the technical word is retaliated against, but in their terms, you know, that they're not going to be in trouble, you know? For making a report. Put this in another one. No student shall be subject to negative action for reporting or assisting. It was in the last one we read, the very last sentence. We could probably put that one in this, and just put that no student shall be subject to negative action for reporting or assisting in the investigation of an allegation of harassment.
So, we want to add that statement to...
To this one.
To the student policy as well?
I would think so.
Add it.
Because a lot of kids, you know, they're going to be fearful to, and they're afraid they'll get in trouble.
Right. Add it at the very end of the document?
Yeah.
That sit right with the educators in the room.
They can't see their faces.
I know.
They're giving thumbs.
Yeah, I made them do something, thumbs up, thumbs down. All right, thank you for your patience. We will go to draft DRH three dot A dot twenty-one to be adapted, E dot G dot, see bracketed highlighted annotations, Addendum two A, Piedmont Community Charter School Title IX, Sex Discrimination, Harassment, General Policy. General terms, the school is committed to providing an environment free from all forms of sex discrimination, including sexual harassment and violence as required by law. Title IX of the Education Amendments of nineteen seventy-two to the Civil Rights Act provides that, quote, "No person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in and be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance," unquote. This policy and its associated procedures, see school policy Title IX, Sex Discrimination, Harassment Procedures, otherwise known as T dot nine, complaint procedures shall apply in all instances to prohibit and address allegations of such misconduct. Prohibited behavior, the school and the law strictly prohibit the following behaviors, collectively referred to as misconduct, under this policy. Number one, sex discrimination, unequal treatment. Sex discrimination typically involves some form of conduct that denies a student equal participation in or the benefits of any education program or activity, or denies an employee equal workplace access or opportunity of the students or employees' gender, respectively. Number two, sexual harassment. Sexual harassment, a form of discrimination, is any sexually oriented conduct aimed at or negatively impacting a person, and which conduct is motivated by the victim's gender. Such conduct can take many forms, including verbal, nonverbal, physical, or other behaviors that fall under one or more of the following categories. A, quid pro quo harassment typically involves a person in authority conditioning, education, or workplace benefits on the victim's willingness to engage in some type of sexual conduct. This kind of exchange or transaction in benefits for, let's see, that doesn't read right. This kind of exchange or transaction, I think we should strike the word "in," right? It's not reading right.
Right, yeah.
I think we should strike...
Transaction benefits for sexual favors.
This kind of exchange or transaction benefits for sexual favors involves a, that doesn't read right.
This kind of exchange...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I think we're just reading aloud to try to figure it out.
What this is saying is...
Benefits for sexual favors, okay, yeah. The "in" should be there.
That one person is wanting to benefit from receiving sexual behavior, so it is worded correctly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wasn't reading right to me for some reason.
But it's saying, you know, the transaction in benefits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that's right.
Learn something every day. This kind of exchange or transaction in benefits for sexual favors involves a quid pro quo, A, you do something for me, I do something for you. B, hostile environment harassment typically involves some form of unwelcome and unpleasant conduct, conduct that is so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive to a reasonable person that it effectively denies a person equal access to the school's education program or activity, or some regular workplace benefit or opportunity. Examples of sexual harassment, if motivated because of a victim's gender, may include, but are not limited to, the following. Implied or expressed threats, aggression, or interference with normal conduct or movement, deliberate unwelcome touching of a sexual nature, requests, express, or imply for sexual favors or activity, taunting, agitating, or criticizing, including the use of epithets, derogatory comments, slurs, or lewd statements, flirtations, advances, or propositions. See, sexual violence. This includes sexual assault, dating violence, domestic violence, or stalking within the school, or affecting a school program or activity, and defined as follows. Sexual assault is any non-consensual sexual act prohibited by law. Dating violence is violence committed by a person who is or has been in a social relationship of a romantic or intimate nature with the victim. Such a relationship is determined based on its length, type, and frequency of interaction. Domestic violence includes such things as violent sexual crimes by current or former spouse, or intimate partner, or by any other person against an adult or youth victim who is protected from that person's acts by law. Stalking means engaging in the course of conduct directed at a specific person that would cause a reasonable person to fear for their safety or the safety of others, or suffer substantial emotional distress. Number three, retaliation. Retaliation involves any action against an individual because the individual has made a report, or complaint, or has testified, assisted, or participated, or refused to participate in a sex discrimination slash harassment investigation, proceeding, or hearing. Retaliation can take many forms, including, but not limited to, intimidation, threats, coercion, disciplinary action, or discrimination. Addressing misconduct under this policy, the school has the authority to independently address misconduct whenever aware of its existence, regardless of whether a complaint has been filed, or whether the conduct violates any other school policy. Any comments on that page? When misconduct occurs under this policy, the school, T dot nine, complaint procedure shall be as follows. Any person believing they are a victim of misconduct is urged to file a complaint with the school's Title IX coordinator. Publications and notice of policy and procedures. This policy and the associated T dot nine procedures shall be posted promptly on the school's website and in the school's office. The school shall also notify applicants for admission and employment, students, parents, employee, and persons providing applicant referrals for employment that the school does not discriminate based on one's sex and its educational programs or activities under Title IX. Notifications shall be made in the form and manner required by law or regulation. Conflicts of interest. For purposes of this policy and the related T dot nine procedures, if any person normally responsible for some role or duty in the complaint process is the alleged perpetrator of misconduct, then that person's supervisor or another comparable person of authority shall serve in the alleged perpetrator's role. In the case of allegations against the executive director of the school board president or designee who is not a subordinate of the executive director, shall serve in the place of the executive director. Available assistance, any individual who believes they may have experienced any form of sex discrimination or sexual harassment, or who believes that they have observed such actions taking place, may receive information and assistance regarding the school's policies and reporting procedures from any of the following. School's Title IX coordinator, United States Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, one eight hundred four two one three four eight one.
I have a couple of questions there.
Yes.
Do we know who our Title IX coordinators are going to be?
Deborah Moll.
Oh, it's not Jennifer anymore. Was it Jennifer Warren?
Or we could put a job title, HR coordinator.
She's Title One.
Because that will change, the name will change at some point. It's best to put the title, not the name.
It says name, right?
Insert name and contact information.
Okay, we will put name and contact information.
I'm on a whole different title.
So, my other question is, the language under conflicts of interest, say, executive director, should they say head of school?
Did the same thing on the next line?
Yeah.
I believe there are three altogether that will need to be replaced, right there in those three lines.
Anything else?
Follow ahead, right there.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Going back to the first page of this three-page section, this addendum.
Yes.
First page of Addendum two A, bear with me. Number one, sex discrimination, unequal treatment. I might be wrong, but it seems like there's a "because" missing towards the end. So, it says, "It typically involves some form of conduct that denies someone from something," and then it just goes into "of the students," instead of saying "because of" or "due to," like...
Tell me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Tell me one more time where you're reading from.
Add number one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of the students, because of the students or employees' gender, respectively.
See what I'm saying? I think we're just missing a "because" there.
Oh, okay, yeah. Right.
Which one?
Number one.
He's on page one, number one, after the word "opportunity."
Opportunity, because...
Third line down.
So, he's going back.
Any other comments before we move on?
Are these accessed online and...
They will be. Do we have anything currently up there, Ms. Killen?
Well, this is all new policy.
Right.
That we're adding into our current policy. So, this isn't posted right now, but the policies are.
Once it's approved, it will be there.
Yeah, our current policies are on the website, under board information.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
All right, Addendum two B, Piedmont Community Charter School Title IX, Sex Discrimination and Harassment Complaint Procedures. These procedures, Title IX procedures, apply to instances of alleged or reasonably suspected discrimination or harassment based on gender against any person under the control of the school according to the school's Title IX nondiscrimination harassment policy. The school reserves the right to interpret and apply these procedures consistent with the Title IX policy and subject to the law. Number one, general principles and requirements. General information... General information and assistance: any individual who believes they are a victim of gender-based discrimination or harassment under the school's Title IX policy is encouraged to contact the school's Title IX Coordinator. Key terms and designations: the following terms and role designations apply to these procedures. Complaint: a person filing a complaint according to these procedures. Any reference to a...
Complainant.
May include the complainant's parent, advisor, or other assisting person. Respondent: the alleged perpetrator of prohibited conduct under the school's Title IX policy. Any reference to a respondent may include the respondent's parent, advisor, or other assistant to the respondent. Title IX Coordinator or T dot nine coordinator. School employee: assign the responsibility to coordinate the complaint process. Investigator slash preliminary and final investigative reports. An investigator is a person assigned to investigate a valid complaint on behalf of the school and to issue both preliminary and final investigative reports, or preliminary report and quote "final report" for the adjudicator's consideration. The investigator is not a decision-maker in the complaint process but may present recommended findings of fact, conclusions, and corrective actions in the reports. The preliminary report is the initial draft report prepared by the investigator following investigation of the complaint. It is to be issued to the parties for their review and responses to be considered by the investigator before preparing the final report. Adjudicator Initial Determination: the person assigned on behalf of the school to review the final investigative report and supporting record, make further inquiry if needed, and determine the complaint's validity in the form of a written initial determination. Appeal Officer slash Panel slash Appeal Determination: the person or panel of persons assigned on behalf of the school to review (1) an appeal challenging an initial dismissal decision by the executive director. Change that.
Yes.
Strike that to head of school. Or (2) an appeal challenging an initial determination by an adjudicator. If an appeal is granted, the appeal officer slash panel will issue to the parties as the respective circumstances require a written appeal decision as to the initial dismissal decision or appeal determination as to the initial determination, upholding, modifying, or reversing the prior decision or determination respectively. Standard of evidence, and this is where all that information...
We need to decide, I guess, whether we'll use preponderance of evidence more than likely, more likely than not, or clear and convincing evidence, a high likelihood. School must choose one and apply it for all proceedings. So what standard of evidence should we use?
In disciplinary issues, we use clear and convincing evidence.
I tend toward that, but I'm not the only person here, so...
Well, you don't want to really make a decision on anything unless it's clear. So I like the clear and convincing.
I go with that.
Yeah, I like the clear and convincing.
I can't think of an argument for going with more likely than not, really.
Right, exactly.
Fifty-one percent likely. It's too close.
That's what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm with you on that.
Now, preponderance of the evidence is like, it's relatives, I mean...
Okay. Clear and convincing.
Yes.
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 Okay.
This is the degree of proof and certainty required to uphold allegations of a respondent's misconduct and culpability. The school requires that all report findings, recommendations, and all determinations of culpability be supported by clear and convincing evidence to overcome the presumption of the respondent's non-culpability. Interim Support Measures: in response to a formal or informal complaint, the school shall offer supportive measures available to the complainant and the respondent. Title IX Coordinator will provide a written explanation of interim support measures available and inquire to determine what corrective actions the complainant may be seeking. The complainant may identify an interim support measure not already offered by the school. School will consider whether it can offer such a measure while minimizing any burden to the respondent or to others. Following are examples of interim support measures: academic accommodations, including changing classes, testing, or assignments; medical and mental health services, including counseling. Any questions on page two before we move on? Page three. Modifications to education conditions for students, including extracurricular activities, field trips, on- or off-campus activities, or for employees, work conditions. A no-contact directive pending the outcome of an investigation. Such a directive serves as a notice to both parties that they must not have verbal, electronic, written, or third-party communication with one another. Providing an escort to ensure that a student, complainant, can move safely between school programs and activities. Transportation accommodations. Assistance identifying and advocate to help secure additional resources or assistance, including off-campus and community advocacy support and services. Privacy protections: the school will never use or allow questions or evidence protected by a legally recognized privilege, e.g., attorney-client, doctor-patient, unless the person waives the privilege in writing or such use is otherwise required legally. School cannot unilaterally access or consider a party's records if those records are made or maintained by a physician, psychiatrist, or other recognized professional and made to provide treatment to the party. These records may only be accessed with a party's voluntary written consent. School must keep confidential the identity of complainants, respondents, and witnesses except as required by FERPA, or as required by law, or as necessary to carry out a Title IX proceeding. During the complaint process, questions or evidence about the complainant's prior sexual behavior even with the respondent accused of sexual harassment, and even in the cases where the respondent already possesses evidence about sexual history, are not deemed relevant. Informal Resolution: after a formal complaint is filed, the school may in its discretion offer and facilitate informal resolution options if the parties mutually agree. However, informal resolution may not be offered or allowed when involving student complaints against an employee respondent. A party has the right to withdraw from informal resolution and resume the complaint process. Complaint Dismissals: the law requires the school to dismiss a complaint when the alleged misconduct fails to meet the definition of sexual discrimination or harassment per the Title IX policy, did not occur in a school educational program or activity, or... Any questions on page three?
I had a question about the no-conduct directive.
Mm-hmm.
Depending on the outcome of an investigation when...
Show me where you are.
Second bullet on this page. Must not have verbal, electronic, written, or third-party communication with one another.
Got it.
I would just ask the attorney if, I mean, that's a...
If that's lawful?
Yeah.
Let's see what you're saying, because can we...
It's almost like we're trying to enforce a restraining order.
Right. Outside of school...
I mean, we're not cops, you know?
Outside of school, can we enforce X, Y, and Z?
Right. So is there some qualifying language that needs to be in there about, you know, it being enforceable on campus? I don't know, I don't want to weaken it.
It almost needs to, it almost needs to...
But I also don't want to get us in trouble for...
Right.
It almost needs to say...
For trying to do something we're not allowed to do.
It almost needs to say during school hours, maybe.
I think it's a question for the attorney. I don't know what y'all think, but...
I agree.
You don't want to infringe on anybody's rights.
Right. But I mean, I don't want to weaken the policy in that, you know, we need to be able to enforce it on campus for sure.
Right.
And encourage it off-campus, but we just need to know that that language is okay.
Page four, did not occur in the United States. When a complaint is dismissed, the school may still address the alleged misconduct in a separate proceeding if it may have violated some other law or school policy. The school in its discretion may dismiss a complaint when the complainant notifies the Title IX Coordinator in writing of a request to withdraw the complaint. The respondent is no longer enrolled in if a student or employed by, if an employee, the school, or specific circumstances prevent the school from gathering the necessary evidence to sufficiently investigate and determine an outcome. If the Title IX Coordinator believes there is substantial reason to dismiss a complaint, coordinator shall make a written request to the...
Head of school.
Head of school. Or designee to review it. The head of school will decide whether to dismiss the complaint. If the complaint is initially dismissed, Title IX Coordinator shall, on behalf of the head of school, promptly notify the parties in writing of the initial dismissal and the reasons. Either party may appeal an initial dismissal decision by submitting a written request for appeal to the Title IX Coordinator within five days of that initial decision. If the initial dismissal is not appealed in a timely or proper manner, the dismissal decision shall become final. Title IX Coordinator shall forward a timely request to a designated appeal officer or panel according to the appeal process set forth further below in these procedures. Furthermore, the target deadlines in these procedures set forth below shall be calculated based on the date of the complaint filing, shall be adjusted by adding ten additional days to the calculations. Complaint Process Officials: fairness slash conflicts of interest. All officials involved in the complaint process, known as complaint officials, shall be objective, neutral, fair, and adequately trained and skilled in the conduct of their respective duties. No complaint official may serve in more than one role in any single complaint process. A complaint official shall not serve in a complaint process if she or he has an actual apparent or potential conflict of interest. This includes being a subordinate or close colleague of an employee who is a party or is a family relative of a party. A complaint official or prospectively appointed official is duty-bound to notify the T dot nine coordinator of any such conflict. The...
Head of school.
Head of school shall appoint another neutral, trained employee in place of the T dot nine coordinator if the conflict of interest involves the T dot nine coordinator. In any instance where a complaint official or potential complaint official has a conflict of interest towards a party in the complaint process, the T dot nine coordinator shall appoint qualified alternate for such role. Executive director shall appoint another neutral employee serving place of the regular T dot nine coordinator when the coordinator has a conflict of interest. Any questions on page four?
Change it to head of school.
Yeah, I've got one, two, three, four.
There's one in the last sentence.
Right.
You got that one.
Thank you. Page five. I feel like Paul Harvey.
Definitely the Jeff Pruitt show.
Never thought I would feel like Paul Harvey, but I do.
Stack's getting thinner.
Yeah.
Is it?
Is it?
You're gonna be hearing my voice, hearing my voice in your dreams tonight.
Yes, we will.
Stay awake, Alex.
That's right, or nightmares, whatever the case may be. Whenever the, let's change that to head of school. Has a conflict of interest or is a named party in a complaint process, the board chairperson or designee shall serve in the head of school's place as needed. In such instances, the T dot nine coordinator shall serve under the board chairperson's close supervision or designee in carrying out the coordinator duties. If necessary, to avoid undue influence or bias, the T dot nine coordinator is a subordinate of the head of school. Content of investigative reports and determinations. Any conclusions or determinations made in the complaint process, whether in the investigator's reports, or adjudicator, or appeal determinations, including a final determination, should include the following elements of whatever form and scope determine appropriate: A, an executive summary of the primary allegations, applicable school policies, allegedly violated conclusions drawn regarding culpability, and recommended corrective actions if necessary. B, complaint procedures completed at that point in time, including a summary of primary investigative measures. C, findings of fact relative to the allegations. D, analysis and conclusions relative to the allegations and school policies violated or not violated. E, a summation regarding the ultimate determination of culpability. F, any recommended or required corrective actions. These include remedies for the complainant or disciplinary sanctions for respondent if the respondent is culpable. Any remedy should address how the complainant's access to education in the case of a student or workplace equity in the case of employee will be restored or preserved as necessary within accompanying rationale. G, any applicable and subsequent procedural rights of the parties within the complaint process. Any questions on, besides the adding of head of school, which says executive director? Any other questions on page five?
Subsequent is the British pronunciation of subsequent.
That's good. Tomato, tomato.
I do have a comment.
Heresy, heresy.
I have a comment or maybe a request.
Yes.
I feel uncomfortable with the decision to go, to just not have more discussion or time to think about preponderance of evidence versus clear and convincing evidence, given the nature of, you know, Title IX things, and you could be talking about an adult predator and a kid here. So could we take time individually to think about this and then discuss it when we do our second read-through to discuss it and make a call on that?
It's the first read-through, yeah.
Y'all get to hear me do this again next month.
But just so that it's still, I guess what I'm trying to do is try to trigger everybody to look at it. Yeah, we, when we started going through it, I realized this is the first.
Right.
But I think that maybe that needs some more thought and look, and, you know, just everybody looking at it and then back together.
Okay, thank you.
That's everybody's homework.
You're welcome.
If you're having trouble going to sleep tonight...
Already gonna agree to it.
You got something else to worry about. What's that?
Other questions on page five? Thank you, Alex, for that. Page six, number two, complaint procedure steps. Process overview, target deadlines and extensions slash delays, timing slash days. Following chart provides a step-by-step overview of the complaint process stages with detailed descriptions indicated by... descriptions indicated below. All steps should be completed as promptly as possible, but no later than a target deadline unless there is good cause for delaying a deadline. The decision to postpone a deadline may be made by the Title IX Coordinator or the complaint official presiding over the current process stage. Reference to a quote day or number of days shall refer to a school business day unless otherwise noted. In the timeline chart below, a deadline marked with an asterisk indicates a, excuse me, calculation based on a calendar day, not a school business day. The date the school received actual notice of a complaint, formal or informal, constitutes the complaint date. Day zero, target deadlines calculated from the complaint date shall be adjusted by adding ten days when a party appeals an initial dismissal decision. We have complaint stage column and a target deadline column. First is date of complaint filing. For example, the date that the school has actual notice of the complaint. Number two, T dot nine coordinator meets with complainant to discuss the complaint review rights, policies, processes, supportive measures, how to formalize the complaint, et cetera.
Holly left. Sorry. You're good.
Okay, I, I, I can't, you guys have masks on, I can't hardly hear, so I didn't know if somebody said stop. Formal complaint finalized and signed if after initial discussions and review, complainant or T dot nine coordinator believes grounds exist to proceed with complaint. Note, the complainant shall have the right to formalize a complaint even if T dot nine coordinator believes the matter should be referred for dismissal determination. T dot nine coordinator evaluates if grounds to dismiss complaint may exist and whether to forward the complaint for a dismissal determination by the... Head of school. Such referral and determination may also occur subsequently as appropriate. If applicable, dismissal referral by T dot nine coordinator and determination by... Head of school. Note, referral for and dismissal may also occur later in the process's new information. Questions on page six? Page seven. Arises or circumstances allow the right to appeal, any dismissal shall be made within ten days of a dismissal determination. Assignment of investigator, adjudicator, initial notice of complaint to parties, final investigation report issued, adjudication process initiated, adjudicator review of final investigative report, the opportunity for parties to submit questions, further inquiry as needed, initial determination issue, right to request appeal, appeal determination. A complaint proceeding may be subject to dismissal or good cause delay, potentially requiring comparable deadline extensions. In addition, schools have the option to offer parties a hearing or comparable proceeding at any stage of the process.
Comparable. I was saying comparable deadline extension.
Comparable, yeah, okay.
I think you said comparable.
That's what I meant.
Oh, okay.
He's British.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that was the word we needed.
Yep.
In case of a good cause delay, the parties and other, I didn't know I was gonna have a, yeah.
Pay that dollar?
No, you're gonna be reading in your sleep.
Case of a good cause delay, the parties and other affected persons shall be notified of delay and its reasons. Good cause for delay may include such things as inexcusable absence of a party or witness due to illness, and unavoidable scheduling conflict, a law enforcement process affecting the complaint process, the need to provide accommodation, instances when students or non-administrative employees are not at the school, and such individuals are necessary to, but not available in the complaint process. For example, teacher workday, summer vacations, other breaks in classes and workdays, detailed process stages and requirements. This shit keeps saying dinner.
Don't worry about it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm so sorry, the camera died, that's what I was saying.
It probably did.
It'll be okay.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
Any person who believes she or he is a victim of prohibited conduct under the T dot nine policy, the complainant is urged to report the matter to the T dot nine coordinator promptly. Once the school has actual knowledge of misconduct under its Title IX policy, it shall respond as promptly as feasible, generally within one day. Actual knowledge means notice of or allegations received by the Title IX coordinator, school official with authority to institute corrective measures, or any school employee. Complaints may be informal and formal, and, and informal complaint is any notice to the school by any reasonable means of communication, for example, email, personal communication, written notice of an allegation of misconduct under the Title IX policy. Any questions on page seven?
Yes, are those asterisks beside the numbers, like C plus thirty, are they supposed to be two asterisks, not one? I can't find a footnote or anything for a one asterisk.
Probably so, because I don't see another single asterisk.
Yep, so it's just on that page, there's three of them.
Good catch. Jennifer gets points for staying away.
Nah, she's sharp.
That actually-
She doesn't judge me on my southern pronunciation of words.
If you go back to the very first paragraph on that process.
Yeah.
It is indicated about, uh, where'd it go?
Asterisk means plus ten days.
Yes, a deadline, well, no, it says in the timeline chart below, the deadline marked with an asterisk indicates a calculation based on a calendar day, not a school business day.
Oh, it did, yeah, so then it's one.
Ms. Killen, should that be a single asterisk or?
And the double asterisk refers to the complaint stage, deadline, target deadline?
I see, it could be.
I think it, I think it indicated up there above.
In the first paragraph.
Yeah, that those, those are actually calendar days, not school days.
Right.
Yeah, that just means it's a calendar day.
You agree with that, Jennifer?
Yeah, that just means it's a calendar day.
Yeah.
I just sort of feel like if you're gonna have the two asterisks pulled to the side, you should have the one asterisk pulled to the side instead of in the paragraph.
Right.
Oh, that one is in there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, because you would easily miss that.
Yeah.
Like we did.
So, add the asterisk, the single asterisk with its explanation beside, underneath the chart.
And take it out of the paragraph. Yeah, and put it underneath the chart. Yeah, it's a good idea.
Makes sense to me.
Good looking out. You look at enough of them, it's done.
Other comments on page seven?
Eight, oh, any comment?
Page eight. Formal complaint is a detailed description of an informal complaint set forth in a standardized form provided by the school, completed by and signed by the complainant or the complainant's parent slash guardian or advisor or signed by the Title IX coordinator. Number two, initial response slash meeting with complainant. When the complainant is filed, the T dot nine coordinator shall meet promptly with the complainant. Coordinator will inform the complainant of the right to file a formal complaint and how to do so, review the complaint process, answer the complainant's questions, and provide complainant with a copy of the T dot nine policy and procedures. Number three, investigator and adjudicator appointment. The Title IX coordinator shall appoint an objective, trained, competent, and unbiased investigator and adjudicator to the matter within seven days. Number four, notice of complaint. The Title IX coordinator shall provide written notice of the complaint filing to the relevant parties and the investigator. Such notice shall include the following. A, the names of the complainant and the respondent. B, a brief summary of the essential allegations of wrongdoing. C, a more detailed account of the relevant allegations and facts, including critical dates, actions, witnesses, and individuals with relevant knowledge. D, the presumption of non-culpability of the respondent. E, the range of possible remedies and disciplinary sanctions, excuse me, following any determination of culpability. F, the standard of evidence that will apply to investigative findings, recommendation, and any determination. G, notice of any school code of conduct, provision prohibiting the making or facilitating any false statements or evidence in a grievance or complaint process. H, that the parties may have an advisor of their choice, request to inspect and review the available evidence and copy of the relevant code of conduct, participate by mutual written agreement in informal resolution when not involving a student allegation against an employee, and appeal an initial complaint dismissal or initial determination. Any notes on page eight?
Is that second one a request to inspect and review the available evidence and a copy of the relevant code of conduct? A little bit questionable about whether or not, due to confidentiality and... If that can be done.
Jennifer, where are you reading from, I'm sorry?
Second bullet point under H.
H, second bullet.
Thank you.
They can request it. They might not get it, right?
Well, that's true.
That's true, I mean.
Based on whatever counsel or whoever decides legally.
You can give it, you can just redact what you don't, you can't share. I redact all day, every day.
Yeah, I guess with having requests in it, we'll tell.
Should we be okay with the word request?
Yeah.
Okay.
On G, under four, so four G. Notice of any school code of conduct provision, do we have that? A provision prohibiting the making or facilitating any false statements or evidence during a grievance or complaint process?
Oh, do we have a code of conduct for that?
Yeah. Just seems really specific to say notice if you have it, but then why would you, why would we just make sure we have it if we're gonna say?
Yeah.
Don't lie.
Right. Because those are the things that we would get called on.
Yep, Mr. McCrane, he's the only one left.
Other questions on page eight?
He's sticking it out, right? I'd probably be like Holly.
Page nine. Number five, investigation slash preliminary and final investigation report. The investigator shall begin to investigate the complaint as promptly as predictable, but usually no more than ten working days from the date the school receives notice of the complaint. The Title IX coordinator investigator shall have the complete cooperation of all persons during the investigation. The investigation shall be completed as promptly as possible, but no later than thirty calendar days from the date the school has notice of the complaint, unless there is good cause for a delay. The investigator shall meet with all individuals reasonably believed to have relevant information, including the complainant, respondent, and any witnesses to the alleged misconduct- Conduct, is that right?
Yeah, I think we just mean misconduct.
Alleged misconduct, conduct.
I think you just get rid of conduct.
Yeah, that's a lot of conducts there.
Unless that's some kind of legal term I'm not aware of.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know.
Misconduct, conduct?
I don't know if that's supposed to read like that or not.
You can always check on it.
Or other persons who may have relevant knowledge or information. The investigator shall not interview the respondent without giving the respondent reasonable time to prepare for such an interview following initial notice of the complaint. The investigation shall be carried out as discreetly and confidentially as possible. The investigator will objectively evaluate all relevant evidence and make all necessary credibility determinations. Following a reasonably thorough investigation, the investigator will prepare a preliminary report and simultaneously issue to the parties copies of the report and evidence on which it relies. The investigator shall notify the parties that may have up to ten days to submit to the investigator written responses to the initial report, including any questions they wish the investigator to ask of the other party or consider. The investigator will promptly provide a copy of each party's response to the other party after she or he receives both responses or after the ten-day response period, whichever comes first. The investigator shall objectively, equitably, and diligently consider and address the party's written responses. The investigator shall prepare a final investigative report modifying the initial report as warranted by any party responses or other relevant considerations. The final report will be provided simultaneously to the parties, the Title IX coordinator and the adjudicator, within thirty calendar days from the complaint notification date unless good cause requires a postponement. The investigator's preliminary and final report shall address the required report elements previously set forth in these procedures. Adjudicator determination, the complaint shall be resolved in a written initial determination issued by the school's appointed adjudicator no sooner than ten days after the investigator issues the final report. The initial determination may reasonably adopt or incorporate any portion of the investigator's final report and address the required determination elements previously set forth in these procedures. Questions on page nine?
Doing a very good job.
Appreciate that. Page ten, appeals. Initial dismissal decision appeals, a party has the right to appeal. An initial dismissal decision by the head of school. In such instances, the matter shall be handled according to the procedures set forth previously. See complaint dismissals. Initial determination appeals, a party also has a right to appeal any initial determination by the adjudicator, but only in the following circumstances and by showing with reasonable evidence. One, a substantial procedural irregularity that affected the determination outcome. Two, new and relevant evidence that was not reasonably available when the determination was made. Or three, the Title IX coordinator investigator or adjudicator had a demonstrable conflict of interest or bias that affected the outcome. An appeal of an initial determination may also be allowed at the discretion of the executive, needs to be head of school. Or designate if she or he believes other compelling reasons require such appeal. An appeal request must be submitted in writing to the Title IX coordinator within five days following the initial determination, as the case may be, and shall clearly and concisely set forth the basis for a right to appeal, including all supporting evidence. Federal to submit a timely and substantially compliant appeal request shall constitute a waiver of any right to appeal. The T dot nine coordinator will appoint an appeal officer or panel to serve as an impartial decision maker. The hearing officer slash panel shall review the party's appeal submissions, the existing complaint process record, and any other relevant and available information deemed appropriate. The appeal determination shall be issued as promptly as possible, but no later than sixty calendar days from the original complaint date, subject to any postponement for good cause. The appeal determination shall address the required determination elements previously set forth in these procedures. There shall not be a right to any live in-person hearing unless the appeal officer slash panel believes circumstances compel such a live hearing. Upon receipt of a proper initial determination appeal request, the Title IX coordinator will issue a written notice to each of the parties that includes the following. to each of the parties that includes the following. A copy of the appeal request and supporting documents, the applicable appeal procedures, including the identity and role of the appeal officer slash panel. Questions on page 10?
Yeah. So the Title IX Coordinator will appoint an appeal officer or panel to serve as an impartial decision maker. Is the Title IX Coordinator the appropriate person So the Title IX Coordinator is kind of the neutral party. The adjudicator is who in the first instance? Who adjudicates in the first instance?
We've had a list of what.
I know page eight, number three says the investigator and the adjudicator appointment. It just says that the Title IX Coordinator appoints those people.
Mm-hmm.
On page eight.
The Title IX Coordinator just appoints the adjudicator.
Okay, so the Title IX Coordinator is gonna appoint the adjudicator.
Right.
When the adjudicator makes a decision, the Title IX Coordinator is then gonna appoint a panel to look at the appeal of that decision. Is that the right process?
That's the way it reads to me.
I think the question is whether or not we want that to be the person who does all that, correct?
Yeah, my underlying question is should it be escalated at that point beyond the Title IX Coordinator?
Do you have sort of a conflict there with the same person appointing multiple levels of?
But they're not making the decision, they're just.
They're not?
No, they're not.
But at that point, could be rubbed the wrong way that.
Oh, okay, if the same person is appointed for the appeal and the investigation.
Yeah.
Is there a conflict there?
Yeah, so I mean, let me just think about it. If the Title IX Coordinator appoints Ms. Purdy or Ms. Killen as the adjudicator, she adjudicates the thing. Now there's an appeal that comes back. Where's she gonna go now?
Surely she wouldn't do the same person.
No, I mean, she's not gonna go to the same person. Now we've got an instance where we've got a subordinate who may overrule the head of school, and we need to clean that process up. So in my opinion, it should be.
Head of school?
Elevated to either, either make it clear that there's, there's a person that, that's gonna be the adjudicator that's designated in advance, and then it comes to head of school. Or it needs to be that the head of school is the initial adjudicator, and then it comes to the board.
I see what you mean.
What do y'all think?
That makes sense.
There's an investigator and an adjudicator. Those are two different people.
Yes, yes.
The Title IX person is just coordinating, right?
It's the coordinator, right.
Yeah, they're coordinating, make sure there's an investigator, make sure there's an adjudicator. And probably we should designate the adjudicator. Unless that person's directly involved, it should be head of school or someone that head of school designates.
That makes sense. So that they don't have to find somebody.
Because if we go to the top in the beginning, what happens at the appeal? Title IX coordinators lost because they don't know who to appoint now.
Right.
Well, they could still, I mean, they have the freedom to go to the board at this point, but it's not prescribed.
I mean, do they? It doesn't say board anywhere in there.
Doesn't say that any of these people have to work for the school, does it?
No.
No.
I mean, they could be going to a lawyer. They're, you know, I mean.
Depending on the situation, too. You know, you may not want it to be someone in the school.
Yeah, that's true. Or on the board, or whatever. So I think there's a little cleanup in there where we've gotta make it to where they can go to the school attorney or they can go to a, an outside attorney and have the authority to, to hire that person or, or something. Something different needs to happen in that process because it, it could get messy pretty quick. We could have Ms. Richards handle the whole thing.
I could do that.
Anyway, I don't think we have to solve it tonight. I'm just pointing it out.
I'm wondering if whether or not we should, there's so many different places where we've got Title IX Coordinator, and then we've got T dot nine coordinator. I think it, for consistency's sake, it'd be best to stick with just one.
Okay.
So do like a, in the document, do a find.
Well, at, at one point in the document, it did give the example of, you know.
Either or, right.
Okay, we're gonna use T dot nine coordinator. But I agree with you. It's like, well, if that's the case, then stick with it.
Stick with it, yeah. It was on page, it was the very first page where it gave the definitions of the people.
Right.
But yeah, even by the time you get to page 10, it says Title IX Coordinator twice, and then it says T dot nine.
Right. It says on, on the very first page, it says Title IX Coordinator, and then it says or T dot nine coordinator. So I think we need to choose which, which way we wanted to look and stick with that. Did you get two head of schools?
The thing about it is, you're not saving that much room by just saying T instead of Title.
Exactly.
You're not saving a page or anything.
Anytime that we save, we've just now lost.
Did you get the head of school at the top as well?
Uh, yes, thank you.
I didn't hear it, I just, I missed it, so I thought you did.
Yeah, I mean, it's four letters, you're missing out on there. You would think that they would have maybe abbreviated the word coordinator.
If anything.
It's 9:42, and I'm being nitpicky, but you know, it just seems like.
The poor teacher reps.
I'm usually asleep on the couch.
Right, Miss Fair.
Right.
What time is it now?
Read fast.
Hey, we only got three pages to go.
Somebody's taking notes on what we're gonna ask Jeff, I mean, David about, right?
Jennifer, N I R. Page 11, the right of the parties. A, to submit to the appeal officer slash panel and written relevant questions a party wishes to address to the other party or a witness. B, to receive the answers, the answers to questions submitted. And C, to allow for additional limited follow-up questions from each party. Relevant questions include only those that address whether grounds for appeal exist and their implications for the appeal determination. A party is entitled to an explanation for any rejection of the party's submitted question. Corrective actions. In cases involving a determination of respondent's culpability, the school shall take appropriate corrective actions designated to prevent the misconduct from recurring and restores and preserves the complainant's educational or workplace rights, as the case may be. Corrective actions include, A, appropriate remedies for the complainant, and B, any appropriate disciplinary sanctions. Examples of such corrective actions are as follows. A, remedies. Remedies for a complainant may include, but are not limited to, the following. Providing an escort to ensure that the complainant can move safely between classes and activities. Ensuring the complainant and perpetrator do not share classes or extracurricular activities. Moving the respondent or complainant, if the complainant requests, to be moved to a different classroom or location. Providing services including medical, counseling, and academic support services, such as tutoring or training or retraining school employee on the school's responsibilities to address allegations of misconduct and how to conduct Title IX investigations. Developing materials on sexual discrimination and harassment, which should be distributed to all staff and students. Conducting bystander interventions in sexual discrimination and harassment. Prevention programs with students or staff. Conducting a school climate check to assess the effectiveness of efforts to ensure that the school is free from sexual misconduct and using that information to inform future proactive steps that the school might take. Targeted training for a group of students if, for example, the sexual harassment created a hostile environment, for example, on an athletic team. When the school cannot conduct a full investigation into a particular incident, for example, when it received a general report of sexual violence without any personally identifying information, it should consider remedies for the broader student population in response. Can you think on page 11? Page 12. B, disciplinary sanctions. Disciplinary sanctions against a culpable student or employee respondent may include the following. For student, verbal warning, written warning, interim suspension, restitution, suspension, excuse me, expulsion, required training, counseling, required completion of a probationary period without additional infractions, or requiring the respondent to stay away from and not communicate with the complainant in and during any school setting or activity. For the employee, verbal or written warning or reprimand, placement on a closely supervised action plan on probationary status, change of duty, salary penalty or reduction, suspension without pay, dismissal, reporting to law enforcement in instances of illegal or potentially illegal activity related to the misconduct. C, the everyone's favorite word, T dot nine coordinator oversight. The T dot nine coordinator is responsible for facilitating and documenting, A, the implementation of any remedy, and B, disciplinary sanctions carried out by appropriate school officials. If the coordinator suspects or knows of a failure to implement required remedies and sanctions fully, the coordinator will submit a written notice of concerns to the head of school. Questions on page 12?
I would add, and the board of directors to that last one. Because if we've got a process that's not being followed that's according to school policy, it should be reported to the board at that point.
And should you insert the coordinator's name as the end there? I can get on the other policy. So the other policy, where it's highlighted in yellow.
Right. Yeah, I remember where you're talking about.
Should we do the same on this procedure policy?
I think it's on those other ones because they're supposed to report things to them. So you need their contact information on the policy. But on this one, it's all the process that they're.
Right, right, what he said.
Ms. Killian?
I mean, I think that's just why it's not there.
Are your employees hourly, non-exempt, or are they salary? The salary penalty or reduction. I don't know that we can mess with someone's salary or wages unless it is a suspension without pay. You can't, legally, you can't have someone, especially an hourly employee, wage and labor law state that they, if they are working, they have to be paid. So I mean, I think maybe we could just take that out and just keep suspension without pay or something like that.
Do you want us to ask Mr. Hofstetter about that?
You could, but you're not supposed to mess with people.
I think it's probably, because I have no idea. I'm the same way you are, I don't know how that works.
She's HR, so that's why she knows.
You're doing great, Jeff.
I know, right?
Last one, Jeff.
I know, right?
Somebody give me a, you got this?
You got this, Jeff.
All right, thanks, I needed that.
We're gonna have a party after this.
We're gonna have a party.
Home stretch, I can see the finish line.
Got till 10:30.
Exactly.
Got 40 minutes to read this, baby. Draft policy. 4 dot 1421. Proposed new policy amendments to existing school board policy series 100. Section designation to be decided. Guidelines for non-board members serving on board committees. Introduction, the board depends heavily on voluntary efforts and expertise. One way to spread the work of board governance is to engage non-board members from the school or broader community to assist the board in carrying out its duties. Such non-board members, heretofore as known as NBM, help with load sharing by participating in regular or ad hoc board committees. For example, a board's finance committee may be well-served by including financial experts who are not regular board members. Following our general NBM practices that apply to PCCS. NBM orientation, policy familiarity, and commitment. NBM's should be informed of and annually committed in writing to support, one, school mission and values. Two, the NBM's respective committee and job description. Three, board policies, at least those related to the NBM's and respective committee role. Four, the board's conflict of interest policy. Five, applicable confidentiality, public records, and open meeting laws. School boards should provide initial and periodic training for NBM's, especially newly appointed ones. NBM access and engagement restrictions. Boards must be careful not to violate any laws because of NBM participation. This concern applies particularly to protecting legally established confidentiality laws regarding school employees, students.
Students.
We have a space there, I don't know why.
Should be an S, I think.
I would say students. Okay, we'll add that S. And school threat records and plans. Except as approved in writing by the board or board president, NBM's may not have access to legally protected confidential records, information, and related deliberations. For example, personnel and student records, collection of survey data related to personnel evaluations, personnel reviews, disciplinary action, and related decisions. Not speak publicly on behalf of their respective committee or the school board or represent the school on legal matters. Lead or chair any committee. Exercising any supervisory or disciplinary role or influence regarding students or employees. Be guaranteed a specific term of service. For example, an NBM may be removed at the board's will by a full board action. Executive Committee action, act of the president or the chairperson of the committee in conjunction with an officer of the board. Act, contrary to the intent of the board or any of its committees as determined by the board, the executive committee, the board president, or the chairman or the committee on which the NBM serves, its coordination with, and approval by the board president. Act outside of the scope of goals or duties established by the respective committee chairperson or the board president. Questions on proposed new policy. That concludes my committee's report.
You are awesome.
Thank you, Jeff. That was likely the most difficult thing we've had to do.
Well, you know, we've only got two more meetings, so you know, had to do something.
That's right, yeah. We've earned your pay this month.
Yes, yes.
All right, item number seven on the agenda is to announce the next board meeting, which will be May 18th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. We stand adjourned, thank you very much.
What are those dates again?
You won't be there.
July 24th or 31st.
It's all good, y'all do whatever you want.
He's not gonna be on the date.
You and I won't be there, buddy. We should, we should bring him breakfast.
What's the date?
All right, I'll bring you muffins that day.
July 24th or the 31st, which one works for you?
Either one. Can't do the 31st.
We'll bring him muffins that morning.
Can't do the 31st.
Either for Scott.
But I'm curious on the 5th and the 8th. What was the, in June, what was the question on that one?
The 5th is a.
What did you say you couldn't do?
The 5th is a strategic planning, and the board meeting moved to the 8th.
And the board meeting moved to the 8th.
Okay.
Well, we're out of town.
Those were affirmed, though, right?
So even though we decided to move to Plan A, those kids are still the nut right now.
July, you're talking about July 31st?
All right, then this is for me, y'all have a good one.
All right.
Thank you.
See you at the Waffle House.
I'm telling you.
All-star special.
Have a nice, Mr. Bridges.